Good evening. It's seven o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. Karen, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Young?
Here.
Commissioner Batty?
Here.
Commissioner Miller? Commissioner Keen?
Here.
Commissioner Brink?
Here.
And Chair Gerard?
Here. We ask you if you're able to please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, not under doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair is looking for a motion to approve the agenda that's presented, or if you'd like to alter it.
Mr. Chair, I would so move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Chair is looking for a motion to approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes from the August 11, 2021 meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Standing.
Motion carries. Next order of business is 8255 Scandia Trail variance application. This was tabled from our August 9, 2021 meeting. Donovan, I assume you're presenting?
Yes, sir.
What address did you say?
Huh?
Okay. I'm sorry. My bad. I was looking at the wrong thing. I apologize, sir.
No problem. If one everyone on page.
Chair and members of the Plan Commission like to present the variance application for a septic field to be located on the property line 8255 Scandia Trail. And as, just to refresh your memories, as this was tabled from the last Plan Commission meeting, this is located basically opposite of the Brock's operation there on Scandia Trail, on a small lot that has, as deemed by the county, a substandard septic system. The application shown here with the green circle around the proposed septic field to be located on top of the existing septic. This is something that commissioners requested an additional information on what it would cost to remove trees that might be damaged by the construction of the septic field, as well as a report from arborist on what trees might be impacted by the construction or the installation of the septic field. Let me go a little, and so what was the applicant, Matt Deitner and Amanda Deitner is here tonight to represent the application. The arborist report shows three sets of trees, oak and basswood. They're located in somewhat close proximity to the proposed septic field. Here shown it, there was a shed that's on the property line, and here is one of the oaks, and these were labeled. I did go to the property today and in response to some concerns from the neighbor to the west, Ms. Lisa Wright, and I do believe this 19-foot, I'll make this, the 19-foot measurement shown here for tree number 324 is actually 16 and 1/2 feet. That's the closest one.
What was that, Donovan? 16 and 1/2?
16 and 1/2 is what I measured with the tape from the pink stake, you know, identifying the edge of this, of the proposed box mound system here. The other trees looked like they were, you know, that distance or more. And also shown in the arborist report is what is, what the report refers to is the preferred root severance distance. And that, for instance, for the tree 3242, the oak I just mentioned, that means approximately 10 feet where, you know, survival is close to 100% when this amount of roots remain undisturbed. So that 16 and 1/2 foot I measured, foot distance I measured, still is greater than 10 feet. I did do, had an informal conversation with our Public Works Director on tree root, tree survival. And he, you know, it's his opinion that, you know, when you're working on just, you know, severing one part of a tree roots, some distance from the trunk, usually the trees do survive. That's isn't, that's not, he's not an arborist, but, you know, he does have extensive experience with trees. Also, so the applicant, you know, the applicant's response did not include a cost for removing trees, but more of, you know, the professional conclusion from an arborist that the, you know, that the trees should live out their natural lives after construction of the septic system. So that's what, you know, that's what's shown there, and there's the, in the photos. Also, the septic designer did believe that the septic system could not be moved into that hammerhead part of the side of the driveway due to the 20-foot required setback from the field to dwelling. And again, you know, reasserted his opinion that there is no reasonable alternative SSTs dispersal area that can be built for this lot, you know, except for where it is proposed. I also did speak to the neighbor, Lisa Wright, who lives to the west, and she does have concerns. She said she was unable to be here tonight because she has contracted COVID. And she seems like, I talked to her for a while, seemed like she's, you know, well enough. She's in the hospital, but she felt like she was infectious and did not want to come to this public setting. I'd like to relate some of her concerns for her, and perhaps she has dialed in to speak if she's able. You know, it's also understanding that the public hearing was held at our last meeting as well. So a couple of Ms. Wright's concerns regarding encroachments, which I informed her, are a private matter between property owners. The one, though, that does have some bearing on this application is, and this is something also that perhaps Ms. Deitner can speak to, and I don't know if her husband Matt came on line, but it appears there is some discrepancy in the property line. Where this is shown in the survey with the bold line and then the dash line, which is approximately a foot and a half. Now, this may not matter with the actual variance application. The Plan Commission can still, you know, approve one based on the request, but the actual installation may be more difficult if it has to be shifted, given a, you know, the requirement that it do be placed on the applicant's property. So it appears there is some overlapping between these property lines, and I think the two parties are seeking to resolve that. But that's also, I believe, a legitimate concern of the neighbor. And that, happy to take in questions from the Plan Commission.
Commissioners, any questions for Donovan? Justin?
Did we hear back from MinDOT on the permit? Did we hear back from MinDOT?
No, I did not hear from MinDOT. They have, you know, generally with these other ones, they've really, the other applications, there's another one on Scandia Trail, I remember where simply outside the right-of-way, they were not concerned.
Oh, I see. Okay.
There was some history.
And then just to confirm, there is absolutely no other place that this can go because it has to be within the 20-foot limitation of the house?
Right. Well...
I know it was mentioned by the designer that there's no other place, but I didn't know if that was confirmed by us or not.
I didn't go investigate the other side of the property. You know, I think there is some reference to the report with the challenging terrain, you know, the amount of fill that would be there, would make a cost prohibitive. I don't have a dollar figure of what that would be, or what, you know, what difficulties there would be with the piping and that sort of thing.
And then just one more quick question. So after you spoke to the neighbor Lisa, and she then expressed still concern about the trees even after last week's meeting, did I understand correctly?
Correct. She thought that they were closer than what was indicated in the arborist report, and I, you know, and I did confirm that, yes, you know, one was closer. I think the others, that seemed, they seem like accurate measurements.
Okay.
You know, the 16, 19 for the other basswood and basswood clump and basswood.
Okay. I saw the trunk was about 24 inches. There's a couple feet there. I'm not sure if measuring from one side?
Measured from the center.
From the center is that it is? Okay. That's why I'm not an arborist. Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Donovan? Mike?
Okay, I went out there today and I measured the tree. It's 20, I had 28 inches in diameter. I measured from the tree to his dimensions here. He says it was 19 feet. I got 16 feet 4 inches. You had 16 feet 6 inches, so, you know, it's a little different. It's 3 feet off from the 19 feet. I, we measured from the water over the steps, and we went out 50 feet, and it's right to that last slab of cement. So there's, that's 10 feet of concrete by 18 feet from the street to the backyard. It's 18 feet that way and 10 feet east-west. So they could eliminate 10 feet of that slab. That would get them 10 feet closer. Still in the, they're not sure, as far as I know, that nobody's sure where the property line is, so it hasn't been surveyed, because there's markers out there that say approximate property line. And that's the best I could find as far as the property line. It goes right through, like, through, there's a shed that's actually on Lisa's property that's from that house. There's a retaining wall, part of their driveway system, is on Lisa's property. You know, I, you know, without a survey to show exactly where this property line is, because we've got two different property lines now. Now it's a foot and a half closer to their house than it was two weeks ago or at our last meeting. So, you know, I talked with some sewer companies over the last week, and there's no reason why they can't put it in the same spot it was. They dig up the old stuff, they bring in the new dirt, and they put in a new system right where it was. The reason they don't do that is it's more convenient for the property owner, and it's cheaper. Because with that curtails soil correction, you know, haul all the old stuff away. They have to pre-treat, a pre-treatment program, and which is a, they got to bring in, it's called a C33 spec sand. It's washed and cleaned and screened and everything for the sewer field. But, I don't know. If they don't know where the property line is, how can they put a septic system in without a survey?
Commissioner Keen, perhaps I could address a couple things there. I mean, there is a survey. It's labeled preliminary. So, and I did reach out to the surveyor today to find out if there's been any kind of movement, you know, beyond, in getting actually a signed survey, which I, you know, which would be the survey that we do require in these type of applications. Also, I do see that underneath the proposed field and kind of grayed out, grayed out area, it does say old drain field is under driveway in between stakes, which I assume is, you know, this gray, this gray area. So, I mean, largely they are putting it on top of the existing. It does just appear to be a larger system, you know, larger area than the previous field.
Wasn't the old system in the back?
There's, there are tanks in the back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the drain field was out front?
Yeah, yeah. The old, yeah, there's a note here, old drain field is under driveway in between stakes.
So now they want to put the tank up there and a drain field?
I believe it's just the box mound system, you know, in this area.
Can I answer some of those questions?
I have to get through the city part here.
Okay.
And then, right after we're done with those questions, then we're going to welcome you and...
I have answers to some of the questions that he's asking, so.
That will be wonderful. So, we look forward to it.
Yeah, so, anyway, the 50 feet from that water, the well at the front door, they could still eliminate, you know, the 10 feet of concrete and put that system in, and it'd still be 50 feet away.
I believe there's also a dwelling to field septic, I mean, setback, which I think is...
What, yeah, what is it, from the building?
20?
20 feet.
Yeah. So that was, that was the concern.
From the corner of the garage to that slab has got to be 20 feet. I did not measure that part. But I did look at like the canopies of the trees and that second cluster of trees, not the oak, that whatever they've got it numbered as, 324 or whatever. Those other trees, I mean, they're, they're like just 2, 3 feet away from touching the house, the canopy. So that root system there goes from the tree, the oak tree, all the way to that cement. And that's usually your root system, is you follow that canopy down. And even like their pictures show the tree with the root system underneath, it's actually extending out past the canopy of the tree. You know, and you're looking, that's pretty far out there. And I know they're only going to be doing a single side cut, you know, they're not going all the way around, so it won't be four-sided. So that is less stress on the tree, or trees, because I know that second cluster, there's five or six trees in there, and they're all, you know, nothing to write home about, but they're still, still trees, I guess. So, those are my questions.
Other questions to Donovan? Donovan, I have one on if the drain field's large enough. We have all this data from the engineer here, and it's designed for 600 gallons a day, which at 70% is 450, but the field's 260 with a max flow of 180. Is, does all of this work? I mean, the county's going to issue the permit, but does this size field work for this home?
I leave that to the county's expertise with these. You know, they revised the septic standards in 2016, you know, Washington County did. And, you know, they, as we see that, you know, many older systems are failing, or they just don't meet current standards. So, I assume based on the design that it's designed to meet the needs of the home.
I'll also leave it to the county. Other questions?
My comment last time was, they're good as long as the new owners never have a party, or never have family over Thanksgiving, because you're going to, the 124 average is going to get blown out real fast.
I hear you. Hearing other questions for the city at this time, would the applicant like to come up, and we'd ask you, state your name and address for the record, please, and we may have a few, obviously, we had a few questions for you. We may have some more.
My name is Amanda Deitner, and I own the property at 8255 Scandia Trail. In regards to some of the questions, first of all, the type of drain field system, or the type of system that's being built is called a box mound, and the design does not call for any digging into the ground as long as it is not saturated. And at the time that the ground was, or that the design was done, when it was being in full use in springtime before the drought, that ground was not saturated. So we do not expect it to be saturated, and we do not expect there to be digging below ground. How I understand it, and I am not a professional, is that there will be a box system built on top of the existing ground. And that will be the mound. So it is not a traditional septic mound. It is a system that the designer chose specifically because of the small footprint of our property and the available space. Another question, I think it was covered, we can't move it closer to the structure of the house. You, at the last meeting, requested that we get the opinion of an expert, so we hired an arborist and a certified arborist to come and look at the property, survey the trees, and you have seen her written report, which says that there is more than enough space from the trees to the septic system to not alter the life of those trees that are there. Were there other questions that needed to be addressed?
Susan?
Did you tell your arborist that this was a box mound system, and that it would be a load on top of the root system?
As far as I know, we gave her all of the information that we had about the septic system.
Because I was surprised that she emphasized the root cutting, which is, you're right, not done with a box mound system, and that she didn't address the load on top of the root structure. Thank you.
Other questions of the applicant? Mike?
So, I'm just wondering why this wasn't brought up to us last meeting. It's a box mound, or did you make a change?
No, it was, it was brought up.
It has always been a box mound. We were virtual, and it was a little bit hard to make sure everything was communicated.
Okay, so, how far on the property line, or under your own property, or how, let me rephrase, how close to the property line is this box mound system going to be?
It will be up to the property line.
Up to the property line.
In order to get a permit, Mike?
I was going to say, but which property line? The solid one or the dotted one?
The surveyor will have to sign a survey, and then they'll have to meet that. Otherwise, they won't be granted a permit.
So it will get surveyed?
It has to be.
It has been surveyed. We had it surveyed in April and had the drawing made so that we could get this system designed.
But there's no surveying stakes out there, correct?
I, I'm not sure. I do know, I think I heard you ask about the possible property line that was marked. I believe those stakes were actually from the septic designer before we had the official survey done, just based on aerial views. When he was first trying to get a handle on the design, he had stuck that stake in to say for himself, you know, this is kind of the area that I'm working in. Then we had the official survey done, and he made the full design plan.
But he never put in any real stakes then, where the real property is?
That would be up to the survey company. I don't, we hired them to do a job, and they did it. So you would have to talk to them about that. We hired with Seth.
So are they going to have to resurvey the land to make sure we get that?
My guess is, in order to pull a permit, they'll need to have it state.
Correct. And, I mean, also what Ms. Wright had indicated was that there was some discussion around, you know, an easement or, you know, some way to adjust the line to make sure that, because she had, she had the impression that actually it was a foot and a half in her favor, which would be the dash line, which would, you know, be, which would mean that the, that north, that far corner of the box proposed system would be on her property. But it sounds to me like they're doing some, they'll do some adjustment to make sure that the system is entirely on their property.
Yes.
Okay, Donovan, I have a question. And the green shed and that retaining wall are actually on the other properties, on the other property, not on their property.
That's a matter between homeowners.
I know it's not, it's not about this, but can that be a stipulation in with this?
No, we're not going there. I wouldn't go there. You know, we don't want to get that between two pairs of homeowners, not the city. City won't get involved. The only reason I know, I got a buddy who had encroachments on it. No, they, city won't get involved.
If it, I don't know. We are working with a real estate lawyer to resolve the issue of the property line and the retaining wall with our neighbor. So that will be taken care of.
Other questions for the applicant? Dennis?
For Donovan, can you expand so I can see the whole survey here? I mean, just on the property, I don't have to see. So there's no indication of, that's doesn't have to be that far out. Sorry. There's no indication here of corner pins or anything. So usually those are called out on a survey.
It does, it does appear that we do have those, you know, a pin here at the MinDOT line.
Oh, there is?
And, you know, the, you know, here, here.
That's what I was going to see, if it was.
I didn't, I didn't see anything.
Yeah, I didn't go around the shed.
Called out. Maybe it's just, maybe it's a symbol.
Other questions for the applicant? Justin?
When would this, when would this actually start?
As soon as we can get all of the approvals that we need. We have a contractor picked out, but they won't schedule anything until all of this is taken care of.
What I figured out, just part of the arborist's report was how it was both low risk and safe, but the safe zone, according to the arborists, is until November. And so I just was curious as when that was actually starting. I assumed as soon as you could.
Yes.
Any other questions? We may have more for you.
Sure.
I will bring it back to the commissioners. This is not a public hearing. However, we do have the neighbor, I believe, who is interested in providing some input, and as tradition for us, we will listen to public comment even though the public hearing. So at that, if she could state her name and address for the record?
Lisa, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, we need your name and address for the record, and then any comments you have.
Okay, it's Lisa. Do you want me to start?
Yes, with your name and address, and then any of your comments.
Lisa Wright, 21555 Imperial Avenue North. And, yeah, I am still concerned about those trees. I don't want to be responsible if anyone does die.
Any other comments?
They're on her property. She'd have to remove them.
Well, I am concerned about how close that is to the property line.
Anything else?
Well, are they going to, they said that they had a, they had it surveyed. I don't know where those stakes are.
I couldn't find them today either. No. Anything else?
No, that's it. Sorry.
Okay, I'm going to mute you, but you can still listen in.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Thank you.
We've all heard everything, so, uh, the chair is looking for more conversation or a motion. Dennis?
Chairman, I would make a motion that we, um, this one where I should have asked first, is this one where it's recommended, was it a recommendation or is it a final?
No.
Can we add one more thing about those stakes?
I'm sorry?
Can we add additional comment about those property line stakes in question?
Um, we're in the middle of a motion. We get into a procedural issue here.
Okay. Chairman, I make a motion that we, uh, approve this, uh, request for a variance to locate a septic systems zero feet from the western lot line at eight twenty-five, eight two five-five Scandia Trail with the following conditions. No construction demolition shall occur to the issuance of the required city permitting law. All required Washington County and Comfort Lake Forest, Lake Watershed District permits must be obtained. The septic, third, the septic system must be built to the county approved plan and consistent with the requested variance.
We have a motion. We have a second? I'll second.
Can I, can I speak to them? I'd like to speak to the motion.
Any discussion on the motion? Dennis?
In my mind, the, um, whether the corner pins, the surveyor's pins are visible or not, in my mind is not an issue. I mean, if, if that, if the survey indicates that there are pins there, I'm assuming that there are pins there that they could be found by a surveyor. And I, and I'm, I'm also assuming, I mean, I made the motion based on the fact that I believe that the, the, this whole property line issue, will be, um, will be resolved by the lo- by the location, by the discovery, whatever you wanna call it, of the, of the corner pins. So that the exact property line can, can be determined.
Any other discussion?
Um, I, I don't know. I'm having a little bit of issue, I guess, still with this. I think that there, there does exist, um, a bit of a hardship just with the lot. But just if there, if there's other places that that can be put, pending that it isn't a complete financial, you know, hardship, that's one thing. The other thing with, is with the trees too. If this is something that we're going to approve, I'm still not comfortable with not having some kind of condition put on there. You know, cause we're, we're not talking about risk free with the trees either. And if, if this is something that's gonna be, start to be built right away, according to the arborist, according to her own notes, it's, yes, it is a low risk, but there's still in that risk category for the, the root system too. So, I mean, if I were to approve this, I still would wanna condition on it, so.
Um, so do you wanna ask the motioner to modify the?
Well, like I still have the, still have an issue with the location of the, of the actual, um, where it's at right now. Yeah. If there are other places that it could be put, but I don't know, just from a financial standpoint, what that would be like if it was put on the other side of the property.
Other discussion? Mike?
So with this, this, uh, box mound, they don't dig in the ground at all. It's just on top. And then they cover, then they cover it with dirt. So if this box mound system is gonna be on the property line, is that where the, the bottom of the dirt pile's gonna be? Or is that where the bottom of, or the middle of that, you know, that, so it's gonna carry over into the neighboring yard?
You wanna come up and state your name and address for the record, since we're looking to get an answer here?
Uh, my name is Mark Scholpe and I'm a real estate agent with RG or Realty Group here in Forest Lake. Been working with the Deitners, um, since, uh, the initial report came back non-compliant. Uh, we've gone down many avenues, almost every avenue you can think of, to try to find a proper location for a new system with the current codes. Uh, the existing system is in an area that is underground now. And there, when they did their bore tests, the, there was no liquids or, or, uh, water or fluids that are built up there. It's dry. And that system's been in place since the eighties. And these trees have all done very well there with an in-ground system. Now, the only way with today's current codes, because of the lot size, is they have to do this box mound system. And if I can explain what that is, is, is it's, they use six by six green treated poles. Uh, and they stack it, you know, and it'll be about maybe four feet off the, the level of the ground. And then the mound system's within that system with its venting pipes and everything inside there. And that's all done with washed sand, gravel and so forth. Just like as if it was a buried system, but it's a raised mound system. You know, so now it still has the same separation that meets code and, and some with the ground below it. So with the system that's already been in place, that's been operating for all this time, the only reason why it didn't meet compliance is because they did a bore test. There's only allowed one bore test in a compliance testing. And where they took that was well within the trees. And that test came back that they didn't have enough ground separation to meet today's code, but yet they found no fluids. That's the issue, that, that part. So I don't believe that this will affect the trees at all. And, and it backs up the report that the Deitners went ahead and paid over a thousand dollars to get done. Uh, and, and the gal was out there. I was there with her when Mr. Deitner, Matthew Deitner, was there. And she could not see that there would be any issue. And she deals with these kinds of situations all the time. And that's what I wanted to add about that report and what I knew for the history of this property. Uh, one other thing I need to add is, is the well. The well that's at the steps is an old style well. These, these wells are no longer used. This, the only way to use that existing well and to stay within compliant is fine. But it's older too. And the Deitners are planning to replace that well. And they have to go to an outside location. It will not go under the steps. Because if you do anything with the current well, it could render it inoperable. And so because of the location where it's at. So that, that has to get moved out from the steps and somewhere either in the front yard or to the east. So that, and with utilities, there's no location for another mound system off on the east side of the property. And in the back, it, it declined so far down into wetlands, there was nothing the designer could find that would work back there either. This is the, with this small lot and the way it's set up, it's the only location. And it either had to be the raised box system or the mound system. The mound system would not fit.
Thank you.
That's what I'd like to add.
Other discussion? We have a motion on the table? Hear me?
Discussion yet?
Yeah, we're on discussion.
I don't have a problem with the motion. I just don't want anything built past that property line. It has to stay on their property.
Okay. Other discussion? Hearing none, call a question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
We have three ayes, two opposed. Motion carries. So the planning commission has, uh, in a sense, the final say. So we're the last stop. Unless someone would disagree with, uh, the decision that was made here tonight. They have one week to file a, um, a letter with the city stating why they disagree with the reason. Then it will go before the city council and they will render the final, final decision. But as it sits tonight, um, we approve the variance, so you can move ahead. But it's a week down the road before, um, I would, I would check with Donovan, uh, in a week or so to make sure that everything went forward. Other than that, good luck with your project. We are on to other. We will start with Donovan tonight?
Well, I'll, uh, say that we do not have a meeting on the twenty-second of September. Uh, we do not receive any applications, though I still am in conversations with developers and do expect, um, a couple, uh, you know, you know, plans that we've seen pieces of before to come forward. Also, I wanna note or announce with kind of, I guess, you know, a heavy heart in a way, but also with excitement that I'm, um, ending my employment with the city of Forest Lake effective next Friday. I've accepted a position with Carver County as senior planner, uh, in some ways doing almost the reverse of what I do now. I mean, everything I'll, I'll do will be on, uh, septic systems and, um, and so it's be quite different that way, but I'm looking for new challenges. And, uh, feel really, uh, kind of indebted to Forest Lake as being kind of my day home for the last six plus, almost seven years. And, uh, really appreciate the service that commissioners have rendered during this time. And, uh, I, um, you know, I'm telling myself I'm not gonna get weepy, but you know, try me, I might, you know. But I, uh, just feel like this is an opportunity that I wanna jump for. And suddenly where I came here, uh, I kinda was one of those victims of the great recession, not in a big way. My wife still had her job, you know, we didn't, didn't get kicked to the curb. But, uh, I did lose my jo- I was laid off in two thousand nine. It was twenty fourteen when I, then, um, you know, after a hundred and nine, ninety-nine applications, thirty-five interviews, Norrist Lake was my thirty-sixth and somehow, uh, they, they dragged me, you know, out of that morass of unemployment or underemployment. I had some really interesting contract work in that time, um, some good experiences. Kinda spent some time Peoria, Illinois and things like, places like that. But I really felt like Forest Lake, um, kinda offered me a new opportunity and, uh, I really relished this time here. With that, I'm happy to take in questions from the planning commission.
Mr. Thank you for your service here. And I'll ask the question we all have, who's gonna be sitting there at our next meeting?
Oh, thank you. Yeah. Um, we will have Bolton and Mink staff planner sitting in for, in the interim. Um, talking to the city administrator, um, you know, he's, he has indicated to the, uh, the council as part of like the twenty, you know, twenty twenty-two budget conversations, perhaps some restructuring might occur where they might have community development director or, um, person who, another, uh, kinda compliance person, inspector. So I think there's gonna be some more discussion on what exactly, you know, they'll have as a zoning administrator. But in the interim, I'm meeting with Bolton and Mink planners tomorrow. The gentleman by name of Nick Furst, um, will be doing, I think, a mixture of both remote and, um, face-to-face, uh, staff planning work, you know, to process the applications. And, uh, you know, and we will, you know, we will probably receive some big ones. Um, but I, I do wanna, uh, you know, that's one way I do feel comfortable leaving is that, you know, prior to my coming, there was a Bolton and Mink planner. And I can kinda leave the same way, feeling like there's, you know, in pretty good hands. Also, do wanna remind you that there is the joint meeting next Monday night, thirteenth, starting at five thirty, for the city council, planning commission, EDA to discuss, um, lot sizes. And minimum design standards.
When is this?
September thirteenth, next Monday.
Really?
I can't remember. I'm on my calendar now.
I thought we, I thought, I'm sorry.
I must've missed an email or something, cause, okay.
I haven't seen anything come by. What time is it?
Five thirty. Up in the, uh, community room upstairs.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't think an email went out.
Apologize for that.
We talked about it, but there was no, I don't think I saw an email.
Well, you'll get it on Thursday when the packets get posted. That's usually what I send out. That's usually when I send out.
Right, but.
Everything.
Yeah, and, um,
But unfortunately, I've got this calendar thing.
And, yeah, I know I did, we did talk about it at council last meeting. Um, and this is one that, sorry?
At council?
Yeah, well, yeah. I know it's different than planning commission, yes. Um, but thi- this one, uh, is, I think, we wanna have workshop, we wanna have an informal discussion around these minimum lot standards. I think the conversation, um, with that, that Birchwood Estates concept plan, the June ninth, planning commission discussion, where there are many sixty-foot wide lots proposed, um, and some eighties. That is, uh, you know, and then, you know, the, seemed like there was some pushback from planning commission that that was just not community character to have lots, um, veering from that far from the eighty-foot wide underlying district standard. And so, uh, thinking and understanding that on the other side, I'm talking to developers who say, oh yeah, we're getting forty-foot wide lots in other areas. And knowing that that's not what, you know, this city will accept, but wanting to have a conversation jointly with both planning commission and city council so that, um, perhaps we could get, you know, come toward some standard that both of these bodies can, can understand, you know, some more certainty. And obviously, this is prior to, you know, the actual zoning text amendment that would formalize that. And also, um, this is still precipitated by the fact that we went from a, you know, maximum three point six dwelling units per acre density with the old MXR one. And now that's a maximum of six dwelling units per acre. So the fifteen thousand square foot, about third acre lot so, minimum lot size, um, isn't really viable. However, of course, attached units are allowed or the detached townhomes. So there's different ways to get to that, um, to a maximum density. But it does seem like, um, I do believe I've heard from some, you know, planning commission members prior to even the, the conference of plan adoption in April of twenty twenty, that perhaps it'd be a good feature to have a, you know, smaller minimum lot size to facilitate, you know, or encourage, um, minor subdivision activity. So I've, you know, done my re- yes, ma'am?
Okay. Where, which zoning districts and where would you recommend, are you recommending that this happen? I'm thinking about Forest Lake Farms where we've got a, a pincushion of personal wells. And.
This is, I'm talking about MXR one with, in sewered areas, really, sewered and watered. So.
Water and sewer.
Yeah, yeah. And that's where we're seeing the biggest, you know, development pressure. And that's kinda where the immediate conversation is. But, you know, again, these are minimum standards and these would be, you know, what could happen, but not, obviously, developers can veer for that and do more generous lots.
And we see that every day?
We do. You know, actually, you know, there, there is gonna be a, you know, there's gonna be a, uh, yes, um, there's, there's gonna be a, uh, you know, a, another Birchwood Estates proposal, the one on, on County Road fifty, um, east of Hawthorne Heights. And, um, just some preliminary conversations and there's been no preliminary plat submitted. And I think, I recommend actually bring a concept back to, for more planning commission discussion. But, uh, you know, I think there's, there's a mixture there of, and it's not all, you know, sixty-foot wide lots proposed in a way that, you know, creates different price points, different, you know, different demographics attracted to different types of lots. So, and that's what I'd like to see, you know, neighborhoods created, neighborhoods that, you know, can, can accommodate more than one type of family or one, you know, income level. So, maybe one day I'll get a cynical use of you, but I'm not. So, maybe one day I'll get a cynical use of you, but I'm not there yet. We'll see.
I've got a couple of years on you.
Yeah. Well, in government, I think, you know, cynical is, is a, you know, productive approach. It's a safe approach. But I like, I don't know. I'm hopeful.
A lot of the things that you learned in Forest Lake and that you've worked down in Forest Lake of, you know, being an expert, exurb and now essentially being a, a suburb and all of those challenges. You're gonna go again with Carver, so that's gonna, this experience is gonna serve you well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Karen, do we have Councilperson Munson Zoom tonight?
I do not have her on Zoom. I'm not sure where Councilperson Munson is tonight. I didn't get an email from her, so.
Okay, no problem. I just want to make sure before I oops and blow right by her. Donovan, maybe you can expand. And I'm not leaving you in the lurch here, Karen, but. Last week, the council approved that driveway for the property in Wyoming. Maybe you can expand a little bit on, I know they put some pretty harsh conditions.
Well, they, they did approve overturning the, the variance denial of the planning commission for the property on North Shore Trail. This was the proposal to create an approximately sixty-five-hundred-square-foot lot and to provide driveway access to a parcel, a buildable parcel within the city of Wyoming, you know, north of, of Forest Lake. The three conditions involved, no building shall be built on the Forest Lake lot, maximum of twelve-foot wide driveway shall be constructed, a, and with the proper driveway access permit acquired. And then also that the, um, the applicant grant a roadway and drainage utility easement on, on thirty-three feet north of the center line of North Shore Trail to accommodate a, a planned trail along North Shore Trail. The, it seemed that the, the tenor of the conversation was that they wanted to get to yes, to, you know, meet, you know, have the applicant address some concerns that I had frankly around potential subdivision, you know, in that area, just recognizing there's a lot of land up there. And if there is good access, suddenly that could become, you know, land that these owners would sell. I mean, there's another landlocked parcel adjacent to this one, you know, completely landlocked within Wyoming. But the, you know, the, I believe the council believed that these conditions would satisfy, would kind of, you know, address concerns and that, you know, any, you know, there still was control there with the actual driveway permit access. And, you know, whereas if there was a strict, just a straight private easement, they, they wouldn't have the same level of control.
I think that's what I got from the meeting, was more of a control of the variance on anything else, but.
And that would have to be a paved driveway then?
Correct.
Okay. So Karen, anything from you?
No, nothing new. I don't think so.
Thank you for your profound thoughts. We'll, we'll start at this end. Justin?
Nothing really from me, but wish you good luck, Donovan. All this are conversations and your wit, of course. Good luck with everything.
Thank you, Justin.
Best wishes. You will, you will do well. And I want to thank Justin. He has been at the Arts in the Park almost every Tuesday night, representing the Forest Lake Historical Society, Old Forest Lake. And I was at a master gardener table several of those nights. And he had great questions, lots of engagement by folks, and I appreciate. That's a lot of work to do those. And, and I want to tell you I appreciated that.
It was a lot of fun. Well, I appreciate Susan's help because she was helping me put up that tent every time. My wife had to take my kids to gymnastics, so thank you for that. I really enjoyed it.
Dennis?
I'm, I'm glad for you, Donovan, on your new position. Wish you well. This Monday night meeting to talk about this particular topic. I, I have this phenomenon that happens in my life. I call it bunching up. The only plan, the only city council meeting on another project that I have had in the last three months or plan to have in the next three months is Monday night. I just can't believe it. And of all of the topics that I'm interested in, as far as the comp plan and lining up the new ordinances, it's that topic. I just can't believe it.
Well, Commissioner Batty, if, if, if I could send you my staff memo after I, after I, you know, create it, if you want to provide some comment, I'm willing to somewhat, you know, represent your viewpoint.
Sure. I'd, I'd appreciate that, because I would write, I would take the time to, to, to write something. It, you know, it's life. It happens. Nothing you can do about it.
Mike?
Again, congratulations, Donovan. I know I, did you get my pictures today or yesterday?
Yes.
Okay. We've worked a little bit behind the scenes from here too, and, you know, I'm gonna miss you. I could always call you or talk to you and, you know. Have shoes to fill. My only comments on the city council last week is that property up there has not, the city of Forest Lake gains nothing from that property. Nothing. It is what it is, and good luck with them. Good luck with you and your life.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry to go back. Was there, when is the, um, the city council review on the car, yeah, car dealership sign?
That'll be Monday night.
That's Monday. Okay, all right. I thought so. Thank you.
Yeah, so, yeah, just to be clear, also, the Minnesota Truck Headquarters signed variance was appealed, and that will be heard by the, the planning commission also on, on Monday.
By the city council?
Council.
City council at their regular meeting on Monday night, the thirteenth.
And also, the joint meeting is a workshop upstairs in the community room. The council meeting will follow immediately. So that joint meeting starts at five-thirty, scheduled to be at least an hour and a half of discussion time. And then council will be down here at seven PM.
Donovan, thank you for all your wisdom and wit, and I wish you all the best moving forward.
Thank you, sir.
Hearing that, the last item is the chair's looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion, a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signal by by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all for your service.